I'd like to call this me, the Clay County Commission to Order. We will start with our invocation from Pastor Darren Smith. And if you would also let us know what congregation you are affiliated with, that would be great.
Tower View Baptist Church by the World's Fun Water Tower. So, thank you for the privilege to pray. Will you join me, please? Heavenly Father, I give thanks for our government and its leaders. I pray for all the men and women here who represent our governmental authority over us. Father, pour out your Spirit upon them and make your word known to them. Help them to be men and women and all of us here of integrity and understanding of your principles, acting justly and righteously, that we may lead quiet and peaceful lives and let all godly knowledge be pleasant to them. And so far, Father in heaven, how would be thy name? Thy kingdom come, thy will be done. Give us our daily's daily bread and forgive us our debts as we forgive those who have trespassed against us and lead us not in temptation but deliver us from evil. Pray this all today, and I pray especially in the risen one's name. Amen.
Please join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Nolte.
Here.
Commissioner Withington.
Here.
Commissioner Lawson.
Here.
Commissioner Wagner.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Did you see recognition, Commissioner Johnson? Okay, had you on here on the list, okay, thank you. That brings us to approval of the agenda. Is there a motion on the approval of this afternoon's agenda? Commissioner Wagner.
Thank you, move to approve today's agenda.
Motion's been made for the approval of today's agenda discussion. What I would like to do is to move two items from our consent agenda to our regular 43 and 346. I just think that they are, they warrant being on regular agenda. That does not require a vote, of course, so I don't know that that's an amended version of it, is it, counselor?
Commissioner, first, I believe you're referring to 2023, 243, and 246?
Yes, did I say that incorrectly?
You said 343 is what I heard.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. And I'm sorry.
243 and 246.
So, and I understand that somebody needs to make a motion to amend the agenda that needs then go to a vote.
No.
Administrator.
I'm sorry for correction, because this is on the consent agenda, any commissioner can request to remove an item from the consent agenda and have it considered separately. So, what the procedure would be, we would go through the consent agenda of items 237 and 239. Those would be approved by consent, and then you would take 2023, 243, and 2023, 246 individually, immediately following that, before you get to regular.
So, procedurally, your preference would be that I do it when we hit those items on the consent, well, I'm sorry, procedurally, would you like me to do something differently?
Procedurally, I will read what the consent agenda is. I'll list all four of them, and then any commissioner after that can request to remove an item to be considered individually. And so, once that request comes in, it's now removed from the consent, and then you will vote on those remaining on the consent.
I was under the impression you could do it at any time, but I have no problem with doing it in a way that makes it a more orderly transaction.
Yeah.
Very well, obviously, that's what I'm going to be, I'm going to be asking to do as we go forward. Is there any other discussion on the agenda? Commissioner Wagner. I'm sorry, Commissioner Lawson, I'm sorry.
Why are we doing that? What's the reasoning behind moving those to the regular agenda?
I can explain it now or I can explain it then, I don't think I'm out of order explaining it now, because I feel that those are not consent items. I feel that those are items that have in the past had some level of controversy, and they also involve the spending of monies. They are, the creation, the first one is creation of, or the first one is a, something that has been controversial in the past, so I think allowing maximum opportunity for discussion. The second one is a creation of a new, a new border commission, so I think that that also warrants it. I have no particular discussion on that in mind, I just think it's more appropriate for us to keep consent agenda to be more neutral type of issues.
Well, I agree with you on the opioid settlement, but this other one, I think we beat the dead horse to death, and I don't know why we have to, you know, do go all through this again, just, that's just my feeling, so whatever everybody wants to do is fine with me.
Further discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Wagner?
I close.
Commissioner Wagner closes, seeing no further discussion, call the roll on our
Commissioner Wagner. Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you. That brings us to public comments. Are there any members of the public who would care to comment on any issues? I see none, so we will move on unless someone has something, very good. That brings us to our consent agenda. Administrator?
The consent agenda allows the commission to act upon items considered to be routine and approved in one motion. These may include items that have been reviewed by the commission in a prior session. There will be no separate discussion unless a commissioner requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. There are four items on the consent agenda. 2023-237 is the consideration of approving a revocable event license for Cowboy Up Events LLC for the 12th Annual Matt Mason Cowboy Up Triathlon at Smithville Lake. Resolution 2023-239, approving invoice payments for Clay County from July 7th to July 13th for 412 invoices totaling $922,625.95. Resolution 2023-243, repealing amended 2023-162 and appointing the following commissioners to the Clay County Economic Development Council Board of Directors for 2023. And resolution 2023-246, approving the creation of the Clay County, Missouri Opioid Settlement Task Force. And I believe there is a request by a commissioner to remove 2023-243 and 2023-246 for consideration separately.
That is correct.
So, if you approve the consent agenda, then you will be approving 2023-237 and 2023-239.
Very well. Is there a motion on the consent agenda? Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you, move to approve 2023-237 and 2023-239 on the consent agenda.
Motion has been made to approve items 2023, 237, and 239 on today's consent agenda. Discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Hi.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
That brings us to our regular agenda. First item on our regular agenda is 2023, 238.
Yeah, typically, we would finish up the two items that were on consent, but if the commission wants to start.
It doesn't, it doesn't really matter, I just, usually, I just put them at the end. I was thinking particularly since the first item.
We do have a guest here who wants to speak, so.
Exactly, I wanted to give that consideration to the citizen who is here to make their case.
So, resolution 2023-238 is a request for waiver of fees, interest, penalties, and taxes due to a county error. The applicant is Justin Ramos. The applicant is in the audience and would like to present to the commission information regarding this request, and then the county collector and the assessor are also in the audience and available to answer any questions that the commission asks.
Please come forward, and for anyone else who cares to speak to the commission, please make sure that the button is pushed so that the green light is on and, at the microphone. State your name and then proceed.
How's it going? My name is Justin Ramos, excuse me. So, my wife and I, Avery, moved to Liberty, Missouri on July 22nd, 2019, after purchasing 1323 Eastern Court here in Liberty. Unfortunately, due to circumstances regarding the COVID-19 global pandemic, we sold that same property on June 11th of 2020. While living in Liberty, we had two vehicles that were registered in the state of Missouri, a 2018 Honda Accord and a 2019 Ford F-150. In early April, when we put Eastern Court, our house, on the market, we forwarded our mail to our new address in Overland Park, Kansas, for the max allotted time that the U.S. Postal Service offers of six months. Although Clay County has record of sending multiple letters to our previous address, 1323, none of them at any point in time were forwarded to our new address since the first notice that Clay County has of sending out a letter was November 9th of 2020, which is obviously outside that six-month forwarding time. Wasn't until Wednesday, July 5th of 2023, that, that my wife or I had any knowledge of these owed taxes and penalties. We were served at our current residence in Olatha, Kansas. As an honorably discharged member of the military, I fully understand that everyone must contribute their part, and the last thing my wife and I would ever do is try to avoid something that we are due. As a sign of good faith, less than two hours discovering that we owed this money, we paid the initial amount due in taxes of $1,602.09. By no means are my wife and I asking for some form of special treatment or leniency in this matter, we just believe that the penalties and interest secured are not justified. With two young boys and additional, at the time, $1,154.41 per the court documents, is not a small sum of money for our family. We ask for your willingness to understand the situation and hope we can come to a resolution on this matter. Myself and my family appreciate your time. On top of that, this morning, it was brought to my attention that in the public documents that this commission had posted publicly, my full social security number, my wife's full social security number, our previous addresses, or my previous, I believe, six addresses, her previous five addresses, email and phone number were all publicly displayed from documents that this commission published. At this point, I really just want to know what Clay County and you as the board is going to do to fix this, and what steps, how this happened, and what steps are going to be taken to prevent this from happening again. As I mentioned, I'm a small business owner. My wife and I combined, plus the age of our business is 30 years, that we've, since we've been adults, of trying to establish good credit, paying our bills, and, you know, the fact that our, our social security numbers, you know, that, that puts my entire family at risk for, you know, potential earning opportunities in the future. So, that's, that's all I have for you guys, thank you.
Are there any questions of the applicant? Commissioner Lawson.
If you could tell me how long.
Please come back, I'm sorry.
Sorry. How long had you lived at the house in Liberty?
Yes, ma'am, so it was roughly, we purchased it in, I have the exact date here, in, on July 22nd of 2019, that's when we officially closed and took possession, and we officially closed selling the house on June 11th of 2020, so less than a year.
Okay, so in, like, in 20, you did get an actual tax bill from us, I mean.
I don't believe so, no, ma'am.
You have never gotten a bill from us?
Not from, when we purchased both vehicles and had them registered, we took them, got the, all the paperwork, paid the sales tax, registration, all that jazz, and then we did, we were unaware of the fact that in the state of Missouri, being new residents, that we had to go to a completely separate office or entity to pay those personal property taxes. And again, I know in the state of Kansas, do things different, I know we're not in the state of Kansas, but that's what we're familiar with, when you go and buy a vehicle, you pay your sales tax, your registration fees, and any local county or city taxes that you owe for those vehicles or that, that personal property. So, we were completely unaware of the, this, this additional personal property tax. When my wife and I received our license plates with the tags, we, we thought that good to go, you know, and obviously, up until, I think Missouri does every two years, when the two years comes up, we obviously have to repay those, those registration fees and all, what we owe. So, we had no idea of, like I said, we moved out June 11th of 2020, and per Clay County records, that first letter wasn't even sent out until November 9th of 2020.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion and questions? Commissioner Withington.
Do we know who from staff posted their social security numbers?
Well, it was inadvertently on a document that came up in a packet with this request. Normally, certainly, we do not post that type of information. Unfortunately, in, there are 12 documents that are associated with this application, and two of those documents got picked up and included in the packet that was scanned and included on the website.
So, we have checks put in place to make sure that doesn't happen again?
We do, we have got checks and balances in place, and we certainly apologize to Mr. Ramos and his family. He let us know immediately this morning, and as soon as we, while he was on the phone call, we were busy taking it down off the website. We are also working with him, in which the county will purchase insurance for him.
I was going to suggest that.
Identity theft, verificate, whatever that, you know, insurance is called to protect him. And so, we've asked him to meet with our risk manager as soon as this meeting is over to take care of that for him.
Okay, I was gonna, that's what I was gonna ask, so.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yeah, first, thank you for clarifying that on the information, that's pretty serious stuff, and I'm embarrassed that we did that, but hopefully that won't happen again, and hopefully this won't create any problems for you. A couple of things, Mr. Ramos, first of all, thank you for being an upstanding, good, paying, tax-paying citizen, and it doesn't appear like you've had any issues paying taxes in the past.
Yes, sir.
And you always do the right thing, and I appreciate that. And, you know, I have an issue with treating our taxpayers as customers, and, and you're one of our customers, and we want to do the right thing for you.
Yes, sir.
However, let me explain some of the issues that we have, and you may already know this, and, and, but I just want you to understand, my personal thoughts on this, I think is ridiculous. Your fee, your property taxes was $1,600, your interest and penalties is 11, over $1,154.
Not to interrupt, sir, but I believe it was just over $1,300 when I paid it.
That's crazy.
Yes, sir.
That's, it's almost as much as a property tax, and, and, just so you know, those penalties and interest, we have no control over. That's all controlled by the state. If we had control over that, correct me if I'm wrong, anybody over there on the administrator or attorney, we don't have any control over that, right?
That's accurate.
It's all by the state, right?
Yes.
Yeah, because if we did have control over it, it wouldn't be what it is today as far as I'm concerned. So, I apologize that we can't fix that, I wish we could. Then the other issue that we're bound by the state is, because this, this is set by the state, and quite frankly, much of it goes to the state, the state determines basically the rules regarding this, which means if you want to refund somebody's money, we have to be able to say, you know what, we made a mistake, the county made a mistake, the assessor's office made a mistake. And that's what needs to be proven in these documents, that they made a mistake. The problem is, we can't prove that at this point, unless you have some more information to help me with. I get that you didn't get a, a notice and that kind of thing, unfortunately, that's not enough, we're not, I don't think there's a requirement for that, yeah, I'm seeing some head shakes there. So, we can't show that there, as much as I'd love to.
Yes, sir.
We can't show that there's a mistake on, on the county's part.
Yes.
And unless there's a mistake on the county's part, we're not allowed to legally do anything.
I understand.
And that's where I am, these come before us on a regular basis, and I get frustrated. If I've had a blood pressure monitor on, you'd see it go up every time, and I apologize to everybody about this, because I don't like the system. I don't like the way, I don't like the way the state controls us at the, at the local level. I don't like the way that we can't say, you know, hey, this is a good customer here, we don't want to hurt this customer, we want to charge him just as much in, in interest and penalties as we do for the property tax, that's not right.
Yeah.
That's just not right. And this is something that we've talked about before, that has to be taken up at the state level, that we, we would like to see some changes happen, but unfortunately, it hasn't happened today. So, unless somebody else has anything else, I know, I don't know if there's anything we can do about it, as much as I want to do something about it and take those penalties away, but I think our hands are tied, and I'm open to suggestions if somebody has anything we can do.
My, my two cents in the whole thing, I, I just don't understand how it took two years for Clay County to, I don't, I don't know if it's monetary or if it's a total time that these taxes were delinquent on, but when, and I have the court documents, when Clay County retained an attorney to find me, they found me in about a week, had someone knocking on my door in a week, and this just sat idle for two years. I just, I just don't, I don't understand how you send out a letter, it comes back, it doesn't come back, but the taxes still aren't being paid, and the only response to that is send another letter. Not, not, not a certified letter, like, hey, we need a signature, sending someone out, doing, I mean, you guys clearly have my addresses, you posted it, and social security numbers, you had it, and this, this law firm found my wife and I in about a week to 10 days. Yes, sir. Their, their answer to me, sir, was, we never got a letter back, we never, we never got a return letter. I said, well, if we're not there, if my wife and I aren't there.
There's a county assessor right there, let's, see if, did you want to say something?
Be my guest.
I believe it would be the commissioner, I believe that would be from the collector's office at that stage.
I'm sorry, yeah, I keep saying assessor, sorry, collector, sorry, Victor.
Sir, if you could, yeah, allow the collector to speak, thank you.
Barbara O'Reilly, collector, I have checked, and none of his statements came back, so we didn't have an address until we needed to start procedures, because we only have a certain per-state statute, we only have a certain point in time that we can hold taxes until we start to collect them, if they haven't been paid, and our time was approximately about up.
So, for clarification, you sent delinquent statements out.
Pardon?
You sent delinquent statements out.
Yes, sir, yes.
But they just weren't returned to you, so as far as you know, they made it to the place, and they just aren't paying.
Right, they made it to the place, right, mhm, right. And then we go into a search of addresses for the prosecutor to go and find people, we have to have dates of birth and social security numbers, and that's the only way we get the process started, and then we turn it over to them, and they try to get our money for the taxing entities.
And that's, so you follow the typical procedures that you normally do, and everything checked out, and?
Yeah, we, yeah. And I looked this morning, and I still don't have anything in the file of any returns, and I did look this morning.
Okay, thank you, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
If there are no further comments, I'd like to go ahead and allow the applicant to have any kind of closing statements, and I will be seeking a motion on 2023, 238, and in, when that motion is made, please remember to indicate the box to be checked. With that, please proceed.
Yeah, thank you, just kind of going off what she had mentioned, I understand that the state and the county have procedures, it's, at the time, it's 2020, now 2023. If you guys, if the county is sending out a letter, and it's not being returned, and these taxes are still delinquent, I just don't understand what that time period is to where then it gets turned over, is it a monetary, is it, is it a time refer, like a time span, hasn't been paid in two years, now we send this to the, a attorney's office to find me and physically serve me? I just wasn't, I wasn't made aware of what this process was, the fact that they kept mailing out delinquent letters, and that, once we move and the forwarding runs out, we're reliant on the new owners of the house to either, A, put it back in the mailbox and write, no longer live here, or come and drop it off to you. I mean, I can't, I can't speak for anyone up here, but I imagine that we've all lived in houses that, you know, had prior owners, and we get stuff in the mail all the time, and if I'm not getting something that's not at least twice a week, you know, especially this, they were sent every six months, tear it up, shred it, goes in the trash. So, I, I just don't understand how, I, I think that the process is broken, and I know we're not going to change anything here today, but if, if someone else in my situation doesn't have to go through this, it would be a, you know, be a win in my book, so that's all I have to say, but thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
Commissioner Withington.
Yeah, I have a question for collector Barbara. Do you have dates on when these letters were sent to the Ramos?
I don't with me right now.
And do you have addresses that they were sent to?
It would have been what was on the bill, the.
So, so in this packet, it looks like they were sent to the 1323 Eastern, is that correct?
In Liberty, yes. We didn't have any address corrections.
Okay.
We had not received anything from the assessment department, and that's by law where we have our names and addresses.
Going forward in the future, would it be possible for you to include in these packets copies of the letters that you sent with the date that they were sent, so that way we can see that the letters, it's not that I don't trust that they were sent, I just want to be able to see that it was sent, so, okay.
We sure will.
So, you said you sent a total of five, and you got none back?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Further discussion before I entertain a motion? Seeing none, is there a motion to be made? Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you, move to check the box for denial for 2023-238.
Motion has been made to approve 2023, 238 with a box marked denied indicated. Any further discussion? You're recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Hi.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Reluctantly, yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
That brings us to the next item on our agenda, 2023, 240, administrator?
Resolution 2023-240 is consideration of approving invoice payments for the Clay County Prosecutor's Office from July 7th to July 13th. There are two invoices totaling $523.11.
Thank you, any questions? Any discussion? If not, is there a motion? Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you, move to approve 2023, 240.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2023, 240, further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Hi.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
I recuse myself.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Motion passes, five in favor, one recusal.
That brings us to our next on the regular agenda, two companion items, 2023, 244 and 245, administrator?
Resolution 2023-244 and 2023-245 are companion resolutions regarding the rezoning and the final plat for the Spire Acres subdivision. Director Jones is here to provide an overview for the commission.
Please proceed.
Kip Jones, Planning Director. So, as the administrator said, this is a rezoning and final plat for Spry Acres, you can see it on the screen, it's outlined in yellow, approximately 10, almost 11 acres, it was originally platted in 2004, it's zoned R1A, which is an old zoning district, and it has access from Massey Road. So, the proposal is to divide the 10 or 11 acres into two roughly five-acre lots, the lot in yellow has the exhibit. has the existing single-family home. The lot highlighted in green would become a buildable lot for a family member to be able to build one home. We would rezone the property to R5, which is our current standard for lots that are greater than five but less than 10 acres, and there would be an agricultural land preservation included as well. We talk about with all our cases, the tier in the comp plan and the five rezoning criteria. Comp plan tells us this is located in the urban services tier. Technically, this is a 10-acre area. However, I'll show you here in a minute how close this is to Carney City Limits. One of the exceptions to that 10 acres is if a city reviews the plan, and they can recommend smaller lot sizes that are called out in their future annexation plans. And that's what happened in this case. City of Carney responded that three-to-five acre lots are what they want to see in this area. Both staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission felt the five rezoning criteria have been addressed. Here is the surrounding area. You can see the lot right in the middle that's highlighted or outlined in yellow. That is Carney City Limits just to the north, I-35 to the west, and 33 Highway to the east. So you can see a lot of those orange lots are in the one-to-three acre size. That's the Holmes Creek Hills subdivision to the south. And this is a pretty well-developed area that has a lot of lots anywhere from one acre to three to five to 10 acres. So both staff and Carney felt that this matched the surrounding area. We have received no opposition for this case. We went through our public notice requirements, which included 13 letters, publishing the case in the newspaper and posting a sign on site. And again, our goal is to create a buildable lot, and we received no objections from outside agencies. And the Planning and Zoning Commission voted eight to zero to recommend approval, with one condition, which are just some minor changes to the recording copy of the plat. And the applicant did agree to those conditions. I'd be happy to answer any questions the commissioners have, and I don't believe our applicant is present today.
Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none. Is there anyone else wishing to comment on this issue? And you had mentioned, of course, the applicant you believed was not present. So with that, is there a motion related to 2023-244 and 245? Commissioner Wagner?
Uh, thank you. Move to approve with boxes checked approved for 2023-244 and 2023-245.
Excuse me. Motion been made for the approval of 2023-244 and 245 with the appropriate boxes checked for passage. Any further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Excuse me. That brings us to the, one of the issues that was moved from consent to regular agenda, that it would be two, 2023-243. Administrator?
Resolution 2023-243 is repealing amended resolution 2023-162 and appointing the following commissioners to the Clay County Economic Development Council Board of Directors for 2023.
Thank you. Again, to explain a bit more detail why it was I was wanting to move that on to regular agenda, the original, the original issue was in fact passed on the regular agenda. It seemed most appropriate if we were going to deal with repealing one of these resolutions. Reviewing it and the change was best and most appropriately dealt with in the same agenda, meaning the regular agenda. It just struck me as not an item that is appropriate for consent agenda. Therefore, I asked to have it removed. I have no particular discussion in mind for this. It just, I think, is a way to, to reinforce the integrity of what goes on to consent agenda. So with that, Commissioner Lawson, you will seek recognition.
Uh, yeah. I, I think I'm going to do this properly. If I'm wrong, I know you'll jump me.
Well, you know, if you did it wrong, you would not, I've already beat you at making mistakes, so don't sweat it out. We'll work through it. Don't worry.
Uh, this is something that we have, we have discussed, rediscussed, and just cussed. So I would like to move that 2023-243 that we approved it.
Very well. Motion's been made for the approval of 2023-243. Any further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
Uh, I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
That brings us to the final issue on our regular agenda. That would be 2023-246. Administrator?
Resolution 2023-246 is approving the creation of a Clay County, Missouri opioid settlement task force. And I'll just do a little brief introduction on this. This has been before the commission at two previous meetings for discussion, just as recently as last week. And the modifications that were discussed primarily last week were fine-tuning the members of the task force. And so I'd like to just clarify what is in the charter for this, which is a member from the sheriff's office, a member from the county health department, a member from the public health. Primarily, discussion was about emergency room personnel, a member representing the Clay County School Districts, a member from the prosecutor's office, a member from treatment and recovery professions, such as a counselor, a member from the emergency medical services, frontline first responders, such as a paramedic or firefighter paramedic, and then two members that bring knowledge and lived experiences with substance abuse, in which we talked about family members or someone recovering from substance abuse. And so this would be a task force of nine individuals that would do research, follow the requirements of the opioid settlements, and come before the commission with recommendations of various programs and plans for your consideration for the utilization of those settlement funds.
Thank you. Once again, to, to discuss why it was that I preferred to move this from consent to regular, I think the creation of a board or commission is something that is best handled on regular agenda. I think we have settled the issue to a pretty fair extent, at least to my satisfaction, but I did want to make sure that if there was any further discussion, it was, it had the opportunity. With that, I have no particular, I have no particular discussion in mind to initiate on this. With that, Commissioner Wagner?
Uh, thank you. Move to approve 2023-246.
Um, I will come to you, Commissioner Lawson, right after I repeat the motion, and then I'll have you come up for comments. Motion has been made for the approval of 2023-246. Further discussion? Commissioner Lawson.
Okay. How will they select those individuals who have had real-life experience?
We certainly want to be sensitive to the issue. We'll probably do sort of a public outreach, and then create a way that individuals can submit their letters of interest, and vet those and present that. The entire task force recommendation will then come before the commission for consideration. But we want to be sensitive to individuals, but want to give anyone who is interested in serving on the task force an opportunity to let us know that they are. So we'll have to do some outreach for that, public outreach.
Okay. So they'll have like a form that they fill out, and, you know, say, this who I am, and this is why I want to be on?
Right. They really won't be able to use our application form that's online for boards and commissions, because it's pretty structured for our normal routine business boards and commissions. So in this particular case, I think we'll simply just ask them to submit by mail or email a letter of interest, and talk about, you know, why they'd like to serve on this task force.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion before we go for vote? I see none, so therefore, Commissioner Wagner, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
That completes our regular agenda. That brings us to discussion items. We have two items on for discussion. Would you please give us some background on the first discussion item, Administrator?
Thank you. As the commission may be aware, and the public may be aware, there's been some preliminary work, and actually quite a bit of review and discussion, and looking at the I-29, I-35 split that is here in Clay County. Some have been to the public meetings, and we thought that it may be beneficial to have representatives from Missouri Department of Transportation and HNTB, which is the engineering firm that is working with MoDOT on this particular project, to come to the commission and provide an overview for you all and for the public. And so I'd like to introduce Ben McCabe, who is with Missouri Department of Transportation, and Kip Strauss, who is with HNTB, and they will be doing the presentation.
And do make sure the microphone is on.
Okay. Yep. It's good to meet you guys. My name is Ben McCabe. I'm the area engineer with MoDOT. I have the pleasure of representing Clay, Platt, and Ray Counties for MoDOT. So thank you for having us here this afternoon. My job is just to kickstart this, introduce myself, and then I'll introduce you to the HNTB team who will present this overview. So she did a great job of setting the stage, so I don't think I need to do that. But this is the Pell study for I-29, I-35, and US-169. So, and what that is, this is, it rolls like a PDF. I'm sorry. So it's a planning and environmental leakages study that was done. We looked at the roads, the assets, the traffic volumes, and we looked at, better understand what's out there, and then we looked at possible solutions. And so that's what this study was all about. This is a joint effort between MoDOT, Mark, and the City of Kansas City, so went together on the funding to make this study possible. This is an overview here of the federal process for a project development. So from identifying the project, to getting the grant, to completing the study, and then moving forward in the next stages, which would be NEPA and everything you see on the screen there. So with that, a little bit on the study area. This screen shows the study area in red, so that's the extents that we looked at. And then in blue is roads where you might or possibly could see improvements made as a result of this study. So you can see that we looked beyond the corridors that we're looking to make improvements to. And with that, I'll introduce you to Kip with HNTB. His team has done a wonderful job on this, on doing this study for us.
Thank you. Good afternoon, fellow commissioners. Yeah, I'll go through this quickly. If you have questions and want me to slow down, just let me know. So we looked at a lot of different elements, and so this summarizes where the traffic congestion is during the morning peak hours and the afternoon peak hours. So hopefully, that's consistent with where you think the congestion is. We looked at crash records over a five-year period, identified on the left side where we're way above the statewide average crash rate, that on the right side, we show really a heat map of where all the crashes are occurring. So we get a good idea where the safety problems are. We, this was a multimodal study, so we looked at bicycle and pedestrian issues. The graphic on the right, where you see a zero, that indicates that there's no bike or pedestrian crossing where one should be. So a one means that there was one sidewalk on one side, a two means there's two sidewalks. So we want to focus in on where are there a lack of crossings of the interstate. We looked at a lot of roadway issues. We identified where the acceleration and deceleration lane problems are, where interchange spacing is a problem. There's a lot of bridge concerns, a lot of aging bridges in the area that are nearing the end of their lifespan. A lot of interchanges closely spaced within the study area, specifically along the I-29 corridor between 169 and the split. We looked at all the environmental issues, including wetland, inventory, flood plains, but then also where the low-income population, historically disadvantaged communities, those are very important to federal government, so we identified those. All of those baseline conditions help us develop the foundation of what are the needs of the project area. So those can be summarized on the left side with structural and functional roadway and bridge deficiencies, safety issues, growth in the northland, traffic congestion, reliability and access issues, including heavy truck traffic, and then a lack of transit and other multimodal alternatives. So that foundation of understanding the needs is what really kind of helps us understand what the solution should be. In addition to what we call the purpose and need, we identify a number of study goals and guiding principles. And these are important because they help us identify what the performance measures should be. How are we going to evaluate solutions? We looked at what we call the universe of alternatives, and you can see how there are a lot of ideas of solutions here. We always have to look at the no action. The no action includes just what are committed, fiscally-constrained committed projects, normal operations and maintenance of the facility. But you can see the different families of solutions. We could do additional highway build solutions, intelligent transportation systems, using technology to improve safety and operation. You could think of that as like the scout system, improvements to freight, multimodal, congestion management, and nonrecurring congestion management. That means, yes, we want to focus on the AM and PM peak hour, but there's a lot of congestion that occurs outside of the peak hours related to either incidents, or weather, or construction, that sort of thing. We had a nicely-defined approach where I walked you through phase two baseline conditions. We took the study goals and purpose and need and the universe of alternatives, and we went through three different levels of screening. The first one was, does it address the purpose and need? The second one was, we took the performance measures that were based on the study goals and did a qualitative assessment. And then the third one was, we did a quantitative assessment using traffic models, safety analysis, so a lot of numbers in that. So in this graphic, just kind of identifies some of the things that were eliminated initially were like toll lanes. You can't toll in Missouri right now. New freeways, new arterials, things like that. But I want to get down to the scenarios that we developed to analyze in greater detail. So there's seven of them. I'm going to walk through them quickly with you. The no action is just, you know, the boxes that are shown here are in MoDOT STIP, so they're fiscally-approved and ready to be rehabilitated over the next five years, but that's it. Scenario two says, well, what if we just added highway mainline capacity, and then complementary improvements are things like the ITS, the freight improvements, things that really can't stand on their own, but can support highway improvements and interchange improvements. But scenario two said, let's just widen the I-29 and I-35 and add some of those complementary alternatives. Scenario three said, well, what if we don't widen, but we just address some of the interchange missing movements? You could think about like 169 and I-29. There's no northbound-to-southbound movement. And so I'm sure you can imagine some other interchanges in the area that are missing some movements. Scenario four said, let's focus on the worst interchanges, and those are circled there, and completely rebuild those. Start from scratch, rebuild them to current standards, plus the complementary alternatives. Scenario five was, well, let's add mainline capacity in the yellow here, an extra lane in east direction, plus let's rebuild the interchanges, but maybe we don't have to completely rebuild them. We can just focus on the worst movements. And then finally, scenario six is add the mainline capacity and completely rebuild those worst interchanges. And then scenario seven, take scenario six, but actually eliminate some ramps. I'm sure you all know that there's a lot of closely-spaced ramps around the I-29, 35 split. So we said, what if we took out some of those movements on the freeway, but added in some more... more local roadway connections? So there wasn't so much weaving on the freeway, but you could still get to your desired destination on the local roadway network. So those are the seven scenarios we looked at in a lot of detail. I'm just going to summarize these tables for you. All of the detailed data is in the report that we're finishing up right now. But in summary, when we looked at traffic, let me say that green is good, and red is, it means it didn't operate so good. And then the amount of pie that's filled in is also an indicator of, more of the pie filled in is better than less of the pie. So in summary, scenarios two, five, six, and seven perform the best. Well, those are the ones that add a lane in each direction. So adding a lane is good, and interchange improvements are good. So that's the takeaway from that. If we don't add a lane, you still see red. When we looked at multimodal and safety improvements, multimodal got better when we, not necessarily when we added lanes as much as when we add interchange improvements, because that's given us an opportunity to address those pedestrian gaps and bicycle gaps. From a safety standpoint, adding a lane on the mainline doesn't completely address the problems. It's really not until you start fixing the interchanges where you see the best safety And then the environmental assessment. We do believe that an added lane could be done within the existing right-of-way. We would not need additional right-of-way. So that's why scenario two is green. And you'll see a lot of red for anything that improves interchanges. Well, this is a high-level study. We did not get into detailed engineering, so at our first look at interchanges, there are going to be some impacts to properties. But we stayed in the report that we're really confident that, once we get into more detailed engineering, we can build retaining walls, we can tighten up ramps, and we feel like that there'd be very minimal right-of-way impacts. We could either minimize or completely eliminate any right-of-way impacts. But we just wanted to say at this high-level initial study, there, we see some. We also looked at costs, and we did it by zone, so I've got this zone map of, you can see the different segments. The bottom line here is that scenarios five, six, and seven are the ones that we're recommending be advanced into the environmental phase, or NEPA, the National Environmental Policy Act. And those are ranging for completely redoing everything that we recommend, additional lanes in each direction, rebuilding interchanges, and the complementary improvements, $370 million at the high end and $306 million at the low end. So 306 to 370. And then we have it broken down by zone. Just wanted to, I'm almost done, got a couple more slides, just summarize. We had a lot of public engagement, which was mentioned. So we developed a community advisory committee. Those, that group met four times. We had two public meetings, and then we also met with resource agencies two times. So like I said, this is, these are the recommended scenarios. Add additional lanes, improve the interchanges, and identify the necessary complementary improvements. We didn't say which ones, because as we get into more engineering, some might be more appropriate for one corridor versus another scenario might be more appropriate for another corridor. So that completes my presentation. This is, we're really finishing up the report right now. We've submitted the final reports to MoDOT and Federal Highways, and they're being final reviewed and approved. And all of these reports will go up on the project website when that happens, which I anticipate to be within the next few weeks. But I think that's the last slide, and we're, Ben and I would be open to any questions you have.
Commissioner Whittington.
Does your guys' plan take into account the potential for Royals Stadium in North Town?
No, it really didn't. So yeah, that's a special event. So we looked at, we used the Mid-America Regional Council's regional travel demand model. We did go in and talk to Clay County EDC and Platte County EDC and identified all the emerging projects that are going on right now to make sure those were included. But we're looking at a typical day, so, and out into 2050 was our planning horizon year. So we do look in the future, we're counting for a lot of growth, but it doesn't include a special event like a Royals game.
And does this include, I know you guys just redid 35, the interchange in Pleasant Valley, and traffic is still pretty terrible there during rush hour. So if we add a lane, are we sure that that's going to improve traffic flow in this area? Because it's terrible in the morning also.
So yeah, our limits went up to 435, but we saw also in our model that, yes, there's congestion through Liberty. And so as an assumption into our analysis, we assumed that an additional lane would be there. We documented, hey, MoDOT, you know, you should be thinking about an additional lane by 2050. But we wanted to make sure that the traffic got down into our study area and wasn't bottlenecked up in Liberty, if that makes sense?
Yeah.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes, thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate your presentation. Early on in your presentation, you gave some stats on traffic collisions, and I believe you said it's pretty high for, in that area. And you showed a heat map as well. Do you happen to know what the leading cause, or the top couple of leading causes of those accidents are?
A lot of them are, you know, you can see where the heaviest ones are occurring, and that's where the congestion is too. So it's a lot of higher-speed traffic coming on on slower traffic. So because of some of the design deficiencies within these areas, you know, it's causing excessive weaving, it's causing high-speed traffic to come up on slower-speed traffic. We saw a lot of rear-end type crashes. When you see a lot of rear-end, that's an indicator of just that happening, that you have high speed coming up on slow traffic.
Yeah. So this would be addressed then?
Yeah.
We expect these collision rates to drop tremendously then?
Yeah, yeah. You don't want to, by improving those bottlenecks, then you're moderating the flow, so it's, you know, that's where you get your greatest accidents, is where you have a large differential in speeds. So we want to have a good traffic flow, so that people aren't having to slow down to speeds that aren't normal on a highway.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none. This information will be made available to commissioners?
Yeah, yeah, you can have this PDF.
Right. So he's left us a copy, and so if the commission wants us to send you a copy of this presentation, we can do that. Also, because it is part of today's presentation, it will be available to the public through our meetings.
Right.
And so online, so anyone can go and will be able to pull up the slides and listen to the dialogue.
All right. If there's no other discussion, thank you very much for your time. We appreciate your, the information.
Yeah, thank you all for your interest.
That brings us to the second issue on for discussion. That would be the Senate Bill 190 overview. Administrator?
Thank you. There's been a lot of discussion and a lot of inquiries about the recent legislation that was passed, called Senate Bill 190. The governor did just recently sign it. Staff has been spending some time going through that legislation and wanted to present to the commission today and to the public just a really, an overview of it and some of the challenges that we see, where we may have some gaps in the legislation, and just kind of start the dialogue with the commission of where we are and what are our next steps. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Administrative Services Officer Jacobs, who is going to do the presentation.
Thank you. Proceed.
Hi there. Deanna Jacobs, Administrative Services Officer. I'm going to provide a brief overview of Senate Bill 190, which on August 28th will become Homestead Property Tax Credit, Statute 137.1050. This was signed into law by Governor Parson on July 6th of this year. It provides us an opportunity to evaluate the ability to assist our senior citizens and to give them a tax freeze, or a grant them accessibility to a program that would provide a tax freeze. We'll start with a brief overview of the Senate bill, then talk about some of the gaps that we notified, or that we noticed in the adopted legislation, and then what we thought our next steps might be. Some of these slides will be a little wordy, and they're wordy so that the citizens can go to our website and review exactly what the statute says. I am not going to read them to you, I'm sorry. We're just going to skip along with that. The new legislation provides Missouri counties the ability to grant the property tax credit. And like I said, it was, it became law on August 28th, one day prior to the close of timeframes to put anything on for this year. An eligible taxpayer, defined as a Missouri resident who's eligible for Social Security retirement benefits. That's something that the media is not getting right. It says Social Security benefits, or it says that they're 65 or older. So if you read that, that particular word changes things quite a bit, retirement benefits. It doesn't include disability or anything of that nature. It does not say that they have to be 100% retirement age, so we're looking at it as a minimum of 62 for this, for the purpose of this. It also indicates that the Social Security retirement benefits, individuals that may not be included, and we'll get into that and some of the gaps. They have to be the owner of record for a homestead, or a legal, have a legal or equitable interest in that property, and they have to be liable for the tax on that property. Eligible credit amount is defined as the difference between the current tax year or the tax year and the year that the taxpayer is eligible for the grant program. It gets even muddier as we go along. Homestead, and you'll see some of the quotes, and those quotes were taken directly from the legislation. The legislation is very broad and very vague in many places. Is defined as real property actually occupied by a single eligible taxpayer, I'm sorry, not single, occupied by an eligible taxpayer at the primary residence. An eligible taxpayer cannot claim more than one primary residence. It's going to be important later on. Gaps in the legislation that we've identified thus far. Does the taxpayer have to actually be receiving Social Security benefits to qualify? Do they have to provide us proof of 40 qualifying quarters of Social Security contributions? Please keep in mind that that would eliminate your railroad workers, some of your teachers, some of your elderly individuals who had a job that weren't able to get the 40 quarters in. So there are some pretty big gaps in that. Is there a retention of the benefit if an eligible taxpayer spouse dies, and the widow or widower does not meet the requirements to be an eligible taxpayer? What I'm saying there is that if an individual is 65 years old, meets all of the requirements, and is an eligible taxpayer, their spouse is 57. The eligible taxpayer passes away, now you have a widow or a widower who is 57 years old and may face a tax increase because they benefited from that tax freeze for at least three years, if they were eligible at 62. So that's a question. Are they, or are they not? Residency. Requirement for documentation of primary residence. What if two eligible taxpayers' spouses claim separate primary residences? It is not uncommon for two spouses to live in separate places for a variety of reasons and needs. And if they're both in Clay County, is that, is that still applicable? Is there a size limit to the homestead? Are we looking at five acres or less? Are we looking at something larger than that, if you've got a farm and a residence on that farm? And what do we do with that? What if the residence is both commercial and residential? Look at the residence here on the square. You've got the residence on top and the business on the bottom. How do we do the taxation on that? Then we get into really interesting parts about tax base year. The year the person becomes eligible, will become eligible, is a tax year, the base tax year that we're going to use is that the year prior to them becoming eligible, and what that would mean is, well, I'll get into more examples in just a minute. What is the base tax year on a piece of property if that eligible taxpayer buys a homestead the year they become eligible? Reason that would be important is if I buy a piece of property and the, it was assessed at a certain rate when I bought it, I put a lot of improvements into that piece of property, do I then get to claim the unimproved assessment? That's a question. If an eligible taxpayer moves to a new primary residence within the county, how is that base tax year established for that primary residence? Does it change with the purchase of a new piece of property? Do we go back to the value of that property when they became eligible? Again, those are things that are gaps in the legislation that we have discussed and we're trying to, to come to a resolution. Is 100% of the tax liability from all taxing jurisdictions part of the program? Or is it strictly county tax? If the voters pass a mill levy increase, is it applied to the base assessed valuation, establishing a new base of tax liability? So the mill levy goes up based on the original, or the base assessed value, not on the current assessed value? If the assessed value of the property decreases, does the tax base, or the base tax decrease remain at that new lower level? Raise to the previous frozen level? Or does it stay frozen as almost a flat tax? If penalties and fees are incurred, at what rate are they calculated? The frozen tax rate or the current assessed tax rate? If the taxpayer makes improvements and/or tears down the homestead for which the tax liability has been frozen, does that tax liability change? Tax sale. Does the person who buys that piece of property pay what the person who had a frozen assessment paid, which is what the tax was that's due? Or do they pay current assessed value that the original person didn't have to pay? This is an example of taxes. Obviously, I filled in a different year, but they're real tax assessments. And I used an odd year and even in an odd, so that we would have a change in valuation. And you can see with '25 and '26, while the assessed value didn't change, the tax actually did change. Those things will go up and down, and that change was $77.06. The reevaluation in '27 created a little bump of $6,500, $6,600 in the valuation or assessed valuation of that piece of property, and the tax went up 241. So if I am turning 62, I'm eligible, I put all my quarters in, I turn 62 in December of 2026, do I apply in the beginning of 2026? Because I will turn 62, and if I do, do I pay the dollar amount in 2025, because that's what I know my tax was? Or am I going to wait and I'll find out what, it gets frozen to the next year when, or the end of '26 when it comes out and I realize that it's a little bit more? Those are the questions that we've been talking about, and how do we address that, and what that really, what that really is going to mean, and how we'll approach that. Our next steps. Create a staff working committee, including the internal stakeholders, the assessor, collector, clerk, GIS, and legal offices. Further evaluate the gaps and develop recommendations for the commission consideration. We went over a few of the gaps that we've identified, but by no means is it an all-inclusive list. Develop a procedural processes. Develop a procedural processes and develop an implementation plan. We have to develop an application. Is the application going to be required every year? That way, we know if the person is still, has passed away, is still living there, it provides us the information so that they're continually eligible year to year. Who's going to receive the application? Who's going to verify the information? Identify an appeal process for those that, that we determine aren't eligible. Evaluate software needs for all the departments affected with the adoption of this legislation. Evaluate security protocols to ensure Social Security information is protected. Develop a communication plan so that we ensure that the citizens of Clay County know that this program is available to them, and it's something that, that we're trying to do to look out for them. Prepare a budgetary impact for implementation needs. Ensure staffing levels. Make sure they're adequate for the implementation. And I think one of the most important ones is in, make sure that technology needs are in place and validated for accuracy. We need to do this, we're going to do it right, so that we don't have our citizens having poor service and a bad experience with Clay County. We need to make sure that, that we dot our i's and cross our t's. Reformat the tax bills to meet statutory requirements. Establish a start date. Present an ordinance for the commission approval. And conduct a media campaign to notify county residents of the start of the, of the program. In addition to all of this, there, there are multiple conversations throughout the state about Senate Bill 190 and the ambiguity and vagueness of the laws that will go into effect. The Missouri Association of Counties had a Zoom meeting yesterday, and they talked about many of these things and the challenges faced by each of the counties if they choose to move forward and adopt the homestead property tax law. And one of the lawyers that gave that presentation, A Travis Elliott, indicated that they're, they're anticipating quite a bit of litigation from special interest groups who want to define the tax liability as county tax only, which would not include any of the, the mill levy or anything else. That they're hearing there's going to be additional legislation that will change or clean up or close some of the loopholes or questions on this bill or law, I should say. Those things are all in, in the future. So these are some of the, the items that we have identified as challenges and gaps in this legislation that we need to continue to evaluate. There are tremendous amount of questions. We just want to make sure as the staff of Clay County that we provide a fair and equitable program for the citizens of Clay County. Questions?
Thank you very much. A lot of us have spent time looking over this legislation, and I had some of the same questions that you pointed out, but I did not have nearly that volume. So to say that it is complex and, and a difficult thing to navigate is sort of an understatement. So I, I think that, I appreciate the thorough nature of the presentation and that you explored a lot of the questions that, that we have. And with that, Commissioner Wagner, you are recognized.
Thank you. First of all, thanks for the very comprehensive look at this. Just a couple of suggestions, really. I, and I'm sure everyone up here has received some form of communication from residents, whether by email, letter, or all the above. I've tried to set some expectations for those that have reached out to me, not the least of which is, you're not going to see it this year. But it does strike me that we have used our transparency portal on the website, at least in the case of ARPA, for example, as to how we're using those funds. It, it seems to me that some sort of condensed version of this would be appropriate, and maybe that's already in the works, but it just seems like, I know for me, to be able to refer folks very quickly to something that explains some of these challenges would be very helpful, at least for me and maybe for others. So I don't know if that is in the workings or if that's already been done or just sort of where that may sit, even if it's a gleam in their father's eye.
Well, yes and no, right? So because we, like yourselves here, as soon as the governor and the press started talking about it, the governor signed it, we started getting calls in the assessor's office, collector's office, all the departments. So we kind of came up with a, a just sort of a candid blanket. You know, the commission has talked about this even before the governor signed it, and so we're exploring it, right? Because it is a rather comprehensive program to implement. And so we did a very quick, just very short paragraph, and also put that on social media. But to your point, well, the more we're hearing about it, but we wanted to talk to you all tonight to kind of get your sense of it. And then we do believe we need to craft more of a in-depth press release and try and put some kind of document together that citizens can go reference as to why and what are some of the challenges that we're trying to address before this is rolled out.
Right. Well, to, to the, to the extent that we can develop something sooner rather than later. I mean, I walked in this afternoon, and there was another email waiting for me that just came in 30 minutes before. So I'm, I'm quite positive that will not abate, at least in the short term. So, so certainly would like to encourage that. Second suggestion, and maybe it is more of a question. I certainly expect the, the Missouri group of counties to be all over this with their questions and suggestions. And I also assume, as is usually the case when Jefferson City gives us a job security in the form of laws that aren't quite filling all the holes, that something may come forward next session to deal with some of those. And I guess my question is, are we, are we active at the table in that discussion? Do we intend to be active? Because certainly the conversations that you are having to yield some of these challenges may also lead to some solutions that you would suggest. And I, I always believe that it's in our best interest to have one hand on the wheel, even if we can't get both, having one hand helps us guide. And so I guess, to what extent are we helping to guide those discussions or how do we expect to in the future? Thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Thanks. First of all, I just want to thank you for working on this. Like Commissioner Nolte mentioned, I've had a lot of questions on this, and you've, you've now expanded my number of questions even, even further. So first, just want to reiterate, you know, we had a discussion on this last time. Not everything we do as a commission is, is the most important item. You know, some items are more important than others. Just want to reiterate that this is a pretty big one. This, over time, will be tens of millions of dollars of forgone revenue if implemented, and that's an estimate because there are so many questions, it's hard to know. You know, our auditor presented with us that in year one, it might be 3 million, and then, you know, an additional 3 million compounding upward in year two and so forth. And, you know, when you keep adding those 3 millions and they're compounding each year two, obviously that becomes tens of millions very quickly. And that's without having resolved answers to questions of eligibility and, you know, what's the base year and multiple taxpayers in one household, that kind of thing. So it's just, you know, not the kind of thing that I think we should attempt to rush through. It's a thing we should take seriously just because the numbers associated here are so And, you know, as we discussed last time too, while there's no automatic mechanism in the bill, the law now, that would pass the tax burden on to the rest of the taxpayers, that doesn't happen automatically. But as the years go by and those tens of millions continue to grow, obviously that becomes a tax shortfall for the taxing jurisdictions, chief among them, the school districts. And they will seek to supplant that revenue with a new source of revenue, the most obvious way of which would be to increase the, the levies on, on the remaining taxpayers who are not frozen permanently. So just, this is a big item. Will have a big effect on the taxpayers and the taxing jurisdictions and the services they can provide for decades to come. And so I know we've got to get answers to these questions. I, I, you know, I, I think this is absolutely going to be revisited next year, if not sooner. I guess we'll see. Not only to clarify the whole list of questions here, but also, I mean, this issue of, of certain taxpayers not being eligible, like teachers and other, other classifications of workers who don't qualify for Social Security, that's obviously completely unfair and untenable. So that's not going to be allowed to stand, I wouldn't think. Frankly, I'm pretty surprised this thing got passed in its current form in the first place, just given how significant of a piece of legislation it was. I, I would have wanted a lot more thoughtfulness to have gone into it. You mentioned the Association of Counties, you know, are asking these questions and trying to get answers, clarifications, all of that. You know, I saw on the news that Jackson County is looking to potentially hire, you know, a, a firm to, to look at this as well. So do you have any sense of if the Association of Counties is going to do that? Because part of this might be that as other, you know, let's say Jackson County does that, you know, we might be able to like, you know, borrow their results in terms of the answers to the questions. Any sense of whether the state association is looking at doing that?
Well, they did, they discussed having a more in-depth meeting with their executive committee on the 29th of August. There are other counties that are looking at it. We've reached out to a couple of them, and they're kind of in the same boat that we are at. They have a lot of questions. They have a strong desire to assist their citizens, but there are a lot of questions on, on really how that's going to work. As far as Jackson County, we haven't heard anything from them. They're a little busy with other things right now.
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, I just saw that, you know, the Jackson County Executive White had, had put in a request to, to hire outside, an outside firm to, to look at this, to study these questions. And then just, you know, some questions we had discussed before that weren't here, things like, you know, are, is there latitude to, to sort of selectively implement the, the legislation in terms of qualifying, you know, qualified taxpayer? And whether or not we have any latitude to have an impact there? So yeah, no, I mean, you know, I, I, I know Commissioner Lawson, this is something you've been working on, and I thank you, and I thank staff who will continue to look into this. I'm not sure that there's any hope that in the immediate future, we're going to be able to get this done until some of these questions get resolved, I would think. And to your point about lawsuits, I really haven't, I don't know if those are coming or not, but you are understanding from the Association of County folks is that that's expected or?
The discussion, the discussion centered around two areas. The legislation that they anticipate coming to maybe shore up this, this law, and then the other special interest groups, because it really comes down to a definition of, of property tax. Is it strictly the county portion? Or does it include all of the other taxing jurisdictions? And that's where they indicated in their Zoom meeting that as an association in Cole County, it's probably not the place to file that lawsuit, but they do anticipate some of the other taxing jurisdictions to really evaluate if a county decides that the tax liability can, includes all of the tax and not just the county tax. So it's, again, it's all speculation because nobody knows. There are so many questions. Some of these questions have to be answered before we can move forward with any real accomplishment.
Gotcha, yeah. Well, obviously, that'll be a, a big, a big question to answer, as you showed in your example breakdown of, of, of the taxes. You know, the, the county portions are a pretty small percentage thereof, so it would certainly have a big impact on the significance of the freeze. I, I guess my point with lawsuits is just, it may also sort of cause things to be put on hold while we wait on the outcome of that, of those legal proceedings, and I assume those might take a while. So I think we might have some time to continue to study this issue, but I guess I just would encourage everybody to do that. Like I said, there's a range, a spectrum of, of importance of items. This one is, is pretty far on, on, on the end of being a big one. And so I think the more eyeballs and brain power going into it, the better. Thanks.
Commissioner Lawson.
I, I think this is a very important issue. You think about it, I will get myself, often, but no, I, I will get myself. And I think that, you know, our whole life, my husband and I's whole life, we've worked our fanny off to have what we have, you know? Nobody gave us anything, and a lot of people are that way. The thing that, that I want to make sure of, I think that we don't want to diminish this in any way. All these people have, are getting a little bit of a break. It's not like we're going to give them, you don't have to pay taxes anymore, Mr. Senior. It's just that portion between what was assessed and what now is assessed that they're going to get the break on. I think as we go forward and we start getting some of these numerous questions answered, something that I really want to see happen, once that we have our stuff together and we know, I think it's imperative, and I think that some of the commissioners should be involved, because we're the ones that are going to have to take the heat in the end, that you go out to senior citizens groups and once we know, and we have some concrete answers to these questions, that, that I want to see that we have the ability to get those questions answered, we take those, we go out, we sit down with the seniors at a senior center and let them know in advance we're coming, because that'll pull a lot of them in. We can get a lot of those questions answered. And I think the overwhelming issue is, and Diana and I have talked about this a little bit, how in the heck do you notify everybody about the darn thing? You know?
Sure.
There's going to be a lot of people that cannot go online and do this, so we're going to have to look at it for whether we mail something or people can go online, maybe they have to come in here and do it. You know, there are those that need that face to face.
Sure.
So it, it's a massive task, and I realize there's no way in the world we can do it this year, you know? I think we all have agreed to that. But going forward, I, I think that we need to be kept in the loop and, because I get a lot of questions, just like Commissioner Wagner was saying, I get emails every day and a multitude of them. You know, what are you going to do? You better let us do this. And, you know, they don't realize, it's not that we don't want to do it for them, it's that it's going to be an unbelievably large task. So we, I personally want to be kept in the loop. I know everybody does, so that, that we can feel those questions when they come our way.
Absolutely.
Nice, thank you.
Something that, excuse me, occurs to me is our relationship with the Association of Counties. Are we a member of that particular organization?
No, we are not a member of the Missouri County Association. We are a member of the National County Association. And I think the conversation that we're referring to was actually the Association of the Collectors.
Okay.
So, you know, which play a very important role in, in this process. And so there are, and we're, you know, we have listservs of county assessors, county collectors, you know, county clerks across, and we're all members of those organizations. So we're having those dialogues, and, and as Ms. Jacobs mentioned, we've reached out to other counties that we heard, we're kind of thinking of being on the leading edge of trying to implement this fairly soon. And so we've talked to them about what are you doing? Because, you know, whoever's going to be, you know, sort of the, the lead on implementing this and those that follow, you know, it would be great if we all kind of had the same interpretation and are implementing it from the same perspective. You know, I, I agree that we're, our hope would be that next year's legislation, there's time spent at the legislature to really address some of these really major gaps. There are always going to be some minor gaps of how things are interpreted, but in this particular one, there are some rather significant ones about how this is going to operate. And we want to make sure that when we start the program, that, you know, we start on the right foot, that we've got the questions answered. we know how we're going to implement the program, and so all our citizens are treated the same and equally and fairly across the board. And so we're having those dialogues with all those counties also. So to your point of mentioning about Jackson County maybe seeking special counsel to help, you know, develop whatever this is, even through the state legislature, you know, we all share, you know, on a county-wide basis. And so we will certainly be in the loop. And our goal would be to be at the table in Jeff City also. Because a program like this, you really need the people in the field that actually will be responsible for doing this, like the assessor, the collector, the clerks. You know, how does this all work? What are those rules of engagement? We need to be at the table to help talk about what those challenges are and what's the best approach. We all get what's trying to accomplish and think it's great. We just want it to be fair and equitable and done right as soon as we open the opportunity.
Well, the point behind my question was, I appreciate that information, but my point behind the question was, how much information are we going to get as a non-member of the Association of Counties? And if the subject has come up before, it is not an inexpensive membership by any means. However, if we are, if we put that against the price of hiring some kind of outside firm, I think that is not necessarily a bad exercise to go through to compare what we get the most bang for our buck on. As far as getting information from Jackson County, I think we should get them from all the counties that are available and all sources. However, my faith in the ability for Jackson County to handle the issue of property taxes is not exactly without end. I have a little, I have some concerns about treading the same path that Johnson County, or Jackson County has forged there. The other two items I want to raise, and it's been mentioned, and that is the possibility of lawsuits, whether prior to August 28, which is kind of the point behind that gap in the, between the signature and the law taking effect, that's something I think it's a good idea for us to get with our delegation to Jefferson City and get the best estimate from that delegation as far as what they see happening. They're the ones that are on the ground. They're the ones that are going to be lobbied by different groups to go in directions. So I think we do want to reach out to our legislators, each and every one of them, to get some kind of a feel for where they see the state going on this, because they will certainly have a say. And then lastly, I think we do need to be moving forward. We need to be addressing these questions, not because we should be moving quickly on this issue, because I think we should be taking the time that is required to do it correctly and to address as many of those questions as humanly possible. But also, in that piece of legislation is an option where it would not necessarily be a commission action. I would want to get some kind of an understanding as far as if it were to go another route and it were on the ballot and it were put in our laps, we will have to figure something out rather quickly. So I think as we started researching this issue, I think it is a good idea to keep in mind that this could, in fact, be something that is not within the control of this commission as far as whether or not we do it. So that's something I think that is, should be of concern and that we should be paying attention to that particular facet of this piece of legislation. So Commissioner Lawson?
Well, what do you mean it wouldn't be under our control? I mean, as I understood it, not that I'm a legal mind, but the way I understood, this is a signed bill. It is going to happen. How we do it and when we do it is up to us. We're not putting it on the ballot to do it, right?
No, that is, it is not up to us. I didn't want to really get too deeply into this. But, yeah, there is an option for it to be put on by referendum.
Why would we do something like that? We've got so much looking forward.
We would not control the referendum process. That would be basically...
It's a petition process.
Yeah. I'm trying not to...
A petition process by the voters. There is a component of this legislation that allows the citizens to basically sign a petition that would then require the commission to put it on the ballot for the voters to consider.
Yeah, I did see that. But I thought we were of an agreement to go ahead and get this done. That should be a vote of the commission, I would think, and that we could go ahead and do it. Now, we're going to go slowly, and we're going to do cautiously and find out all the facts. But nevertheless, why put it out on the ballot when we have the power to give a large group of our constituents who regularly vote and have, and really pay attention to what's going on in this county? Why the heck wouldn't we take the heat and get it done instead of putting it out there in somebody else's pocket to do?
One of the things that we are looking at is, is there going to be a lawsuit? Is there going to be subsequent legislation? To clarify this, subsequent legislation could not even be introduced until December 1 passed, you know, end of, or, excuse me, middle of May. If it has, if it has an emergency clause, it could take effect faster. But we're looking at something that would be almost a year before any alterations were made by the legislature, potentially. And the question is during that interim, might there be some effort made?
Well, yeah. I mean, they're not going to go back now and say, oh, yes, the county, you can go ahead and do it, or you can put it out to the vote. They're not going to come through and all of a sudden now change that portion of it. I thought they would address things like, you know, some of these questions that she brought up, which were valid. But I don't know how the rest of the commission feels about it, but I feel like this is, this monkey is on our back, and we should take control of it and get it taken care of.
Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. Just to, I think, put a finer point to it. I don't think it's an issue of a desire for us to deal with it. The real question, in my mind at least, becomes, do people feel like we are moving ahead where they are not concerned about gathering signatures to put it on a petition themselves? So it's really a question of, in my mind, and I think the spirit of the comment is more of, what is the risk of a few people out there thinking, hey, Clay County isn't moving fast enough, and by God, I'm going to put it on the ballot, whether they're ready or not? And so I think that really then puts the onus on us, the collective us, to make sure that we are moving through these questions with some speed, to the extent that it is possible, and communicating what we are doing to answer those questions. Because failing that, in my mind, that creates the opportunity for a few people to say, you know what, I'm just going to put it on. Right? And then, and then now it's out of our hands because that referendum process goes forward.
We should not allow that to happen.
Right. So that's, I would just clarify it in that fashion.
So I would draw attention to the slide on next steps. So we would propose to you that as staff, we, our team continues to work on these issues. And to the point, as Commissioner Wagner mentioned, is to have routine updates to the commission and to do, and really, we probably need to add here, our next steps also needs to include a communication plan of communicating what our next steps are and as we're going through those steps. So that our citizens know we really are working towards this, but it's not something that you can just flip a light switch and we can now implement. But again, if you're not involved with it, you don't know. It sounds very simple, unless you're the one that has to calculate the tax bills and determine all of these things and have software that works. And so to your point, I think it's what you're saying is, which we agree, is communicate, communicate, communicate.
And further discussion? Seeing none, thank you very much. Excuse me. That brings us to reports. Administrator?
We have one report that's included in your packet, and that is the North Kansas City Special Road District, number nine, their annual report of the financial transactions for 2022.
Thank you. That brings us to county administrator comments.
Just one item, and that is the commission's next meeting is next Wednesday at 6:00 p.m. here in the chambers. And just announce for the public, that will be the last meeting that will occur on Wednesdays beginning in August. The meetings will be on Thursdays at 6:00 o'clock.
Thank you. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Carpenter, we'll start with you, if that's good?
Yeah, no, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
No, that's it. No comments. Thanks.
Commissioner Thompson? Commissioner Johnson? Commissioner Withington?
I just want to say congratulations to Braxton Bragg, 2019 Liberty North graduate. He was drafted last week by the Baltimore Orioles in the MLB draft, eighth round. And also, congratulations to Hudson Leach, 2020 Oak Park alum. He wasn't drafted, but he signed as a non-drafted free agent with the Houston Astros.
Commissioner Lawson? Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. Just a little personal privilege. So I want to wish a happy birthday to my son Truman, who turned 15 yesterday. I want to wish my mom and dad a happy 55th anniversary tomorrow. And I want to wish my oldest son, Patrick, a happy 18th birthday, which will be Saturday. And a happy birthday to my father, who will turn 83 on Saturday. I'm tapped this week. But I am, I love them all, and I'm happy for them to reach these milestones. Thank you.
Sounds like you're going to be a lot of birthday cake.
Yeah.
I just want to make one comment. Obviously, I think we're all aware of the news and the situation that the sheriff, I think, handled so professionally along with other law enforcement officials. Clearly, we do not know details, and we do not, I don't think we know enough information to really get too far into commentary on this, save for the fact that, as expected, our sheriff has performed at the highest levels of professionalism in this particular situation, as have the other law enforcement officials who have responded to this situation. Hopefully, you know, that it will be resolved quickly. But once again, I think that gives you a real feel for what kind of quality we have in our law enforcement here in Clay County and in the area. With that, we have one item under executive. Is there a motion?
Yes, a move to go into executive session pursuant to RSMO 610.21/12 as it is of a contractual nature and adjourned from said session.
Motion has been made to go into executive session under contractual, Missouri Statute 610.021 (12), contractual, and then to adjourn therefrom. Discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.